Okay, before we begin the meeting, I have an appoint. So I have here, whereas Alexander Scoville is an acting Perry High School senior, who since participating in AP Government Class has been fascinated by the entire government process from the local level up to the federal level. And whereas Alexander, son of Charles and Karen Scoville, has been on the honor roll multiple times and is a Shawassee County Scout. And whereas Alexander Scoville is involved in FFA, for which he currently serves as the chapter vice president, and has in past served as region four vice president and has won multiple state competitions. Whereas Alexander has also had the privilege of competing nationally in agricultural sales, dairy foods, and agri-science fair. And whereas Alexander Scoville was awarded a second in the state this past year in prepared public speaking for his speech on ethanol fuels, as well as first in agri-science fair and seventh in the state in meat evaluations. Whereas Alex has also played trumpet in the PHS Band, currently serves as a member at large of the PHS Student Government, and is a member of the varsity golf team. Whereas Alexander Scoville also raises shows and breeds sheep and cattle, and with his family, lambs out about, lambs out about 35 lambs every winter.
Ah.
I got a history in that, I'm sorry. Which are sold to other 4H and FFA members to be shown locally and across the state. Whereas Alexander has personally shown sheep at the national level since he was young, and cattle at the state level since the age of 12. Recently traveled to Louisville, Kentucky to show market lands to the North American International Livestock Exposition. Whereas Alexander Scoville plans to attend Kansas State University or Michigan State University to pursue a degree in crops and soil science or agriculture, food, and natural resource education. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, James A. Hubler, Mayor for the City of Perry, with pride in the student body of our community and this outstanding student, for my alma mater, do this day appoint Alexander Scoville, student mayor for the City of Perry, to serve in this capacity until January 2nd, 2020. Furthermore, I invite Alexander to participate with myself in Perry City Councils and the activity of city government, and I extend him privileges to speak to the issues that concern his generation at the meetings of the Perry City Council. I also invite him to participate in all ceremonial duties of the mayor. Furthermore, I call upon citizens of our greater Perry community to honor Alexander's accomplishment and his character. Thank you.
I think a little wish I like sharing between him.
You want us right here?
Yeah.
Yep, I just want to picture in between you guys showing on the city boards. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. We got a seat right between myself and Devin. I'm honored to introduce our invocation speaker tonight, from the Shasburg Community Bible Church, Pastor Deanne Shaw.
Could you be mayor and council? Here we bow, we have some prayer please tonight. Thank you. Father, we thank you for this evening, and we can gather together today in freedom, and we welcome you at this meeting, and we give you honor, and we acknowledge you as our Creator and our Provider. We also honor our mayor, our councilman, our city workers, our police force, and the ladies upstairs. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions, so we may have a successful meeting tonight. May our meeting be full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. May all of us here grow closer together as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. May we always act in accordance with what is best for our community and for our fellow citizens. In Jesus' name we ask this. Amen.
Amen. Pastor?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Good timing, you two. Time is now seven o'clock, and I will call to order this regular meeting of the Perry City Council for Thursday, December 5th, 2018. Would everyone please rise? And would our student mayor lead us? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everyone may be seated. Devin, would you please call the roll?
I want to take a moment.
Take a moment.
Who lost one of our council?
Oh.
Was it?
Oh.
He's here.
There he is. Devin, would you please call the roll?
Always go to the top before you leave.
Okay. Craig Elliott.
Here.
Mindy Galbavich.
Here.
Adam Grass.
Here.
Christopher Cole.
Here.
Michael Queen.
Here.
Terry Wood.
Here.
Mayor James Hubler.
Here.
All the powerful.
Very good. I find that we have a forum present, which is secret business. Our first item is the approval of the agenda. Clerk and I have prepared the agenda, and to the best of our knowledge, it has all matters of business that need to come before you for your consideration tonight, and I submit it to you for your approval or your amendments.
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Moved by Wood, seconded by Queen, that the agenda be adopted as printed. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. This will take us to reading and approval of minutes of the previous meeting. Devin, would you please read the minutes of the November 21st regular city council meeting?
I move that we suspend the rules, waive reading, and approve the minutes from November 21st, 2019 regular meeting.
Moved by Elliott, seconded by Queen, that we suspend the rules, waive reading, and approve the minutes as presented. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing no objections, is there any discussion about the minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. That will move us to pre-approved reports and presentations. I have three items for this section tonight. One of them I'm going to advise council, because we sometimes take a while to work our way through a process of things, and I didn't want to make the city's auditor sit here while we dealt with routine business, I invited him to come a little bit later. I expect him at 7:30. So I don't want to hold the process up, I'd like to move forward on the agenda until he arrives, and then return the pre-approved reports, so he can present to you during the city audit. We do have our other two reporters here tonight. I'd like to begin with Perry Township Supervisor Mark Fox, who is here with a guest, and would like to tell us a little bit about a subject that he's been working on.
Okay. I'm going to introduce another person that's with me, Laura Acquire. And the old newsboys of Shawassee County is organized through the Durand Eagles Club. And Laura's the current director, and she's going to talk a little bit about it, but she called me about a month ago and said, "Do you, we want to participate." And I said, "Well, Perry Township really has no place, you know, to do this." I said, "Let me get ahold of the, of the fire chief, and talk to the mayor, and see if we can come up with a place that would be along this road that would be, you know, conducive," because they've done it in Lansing, they've done it in Flint, they do it in Wausau. But normally it's either at a store, or it's near a road or intersection. I can remember many, many, many times, Corona and London Road, they were passing out the papers day in, day out, you know, and they, they collect a lot of money that way for the kids. So I said, "Well, let me get back with you," and I got back with her the next day, and I said, "Yes, I think we can do that." I said, "We could use one of the bays, or part of the bay, you know, kind of have them come in off the road, and, and we'll see how that goes Friday, the 13th." So I want to have her come up and just give us a little brief overview about Shawassee County and the old newsboys.
Well, I appreciate the chance to talk to you all, because it was my goal, I took over this program in, for Shawassee County last fall. And the reason I took it over is the gentleman who had run it for 25 years was not able to do it anymore. And in fact, the last page of our newsletter is a memorial to him. But it's all, it's been managed by the Durand Eagles for the last 25 years, but it is a Shawassee County event. And we like to work with local clubs, local political groups, whoever can get the community to work together. And we always hold our collection and our programs the second Friday and the second Saturday of December each year. So you can plan ahead when it's going to be, and your people who like to volunteer will always know ahead of time. We get assistance from the Flint Old News Boys Program. They provide us with the buttons that we sell, which are a $20 button, which sponsors a child for Christmas. And they also package all of our packages. What we do for each child is, there's a warm, the thing about the old newsboys is about keeping them warm and keeping them safe. And so there's a warm sweatsuit in each one of them, there's a warm hat, gloves, socks, underwear, toothpaste, toothbrushes, deodorant, really personal items, and then one, what they call a age-appropriate gift. So it could be a toy, it could be a book, or a puzzle, or whatever. But our goal is to make sure that we can provide them with some warm clothes. We have other programs, but this is the biggest one that we do, and requires the most assets and the most work. So on Friday is the paper drive, Friday the 13th this year. And the cities involved are Durand, Perry, Byron, Corona, and Vernon. Wausau and Corona, let's see, yeah. Wausau and Corona do theirs in September, so that they can take advantage of using some of the spaces on Myers and so forth, which they can at Christmas. So the money does come back to the Durand office in the Eagles, and then is used to pay the expenses to do the, to do the boxes and everything for the kids. We did do, we had some extra money last year, so we did a clothes-for-kids at Myers, and we had 40 kids come in who were from the bottom of the income level, and some of them were homeless families. And now what we did is we let them come in and shop with $150 worth of credit at the store for clothes, or always about clothes. So that's what we do. And last year we served 272 children, this year we have 420. So there's a need out there, and we feel real good in being able to help out. And I'm so glad to get the communities working together again, now that everybody's aware of what we're doing, and we're going to work together again. So I think that's critical, and if you ever need anything, I'm the one to contact. I did bring copies of our newsletter for this year, and they'll give you the information, and, those have, I believe my contact information, too. Is there anybody who has a question? I know the volunteers are set up for here. Our usual hours are dawn to dusk, which means like 8:30 to 4-ish.
So when Mark called me, we organized this. Mark and I are the first two volunteers, but we'll take any volunteers that want to. So if members of council, if our county commissioner can spare a little time that day, if anybody from our planning commissioner, just around the Perry community wants to participate in this, let us know. We'll need lots of hands out there to pass out the papers and cover the day. Mark and I will be there in the morning for sure. I will be gone after the morning, I don't know how you all, Mark can stick around out there, he might go all day. But you're all welcome to be a part of this fundraising drive right here in Perry County at the Fire Hall. And while it'd be nice if you call ahead and let us know in the timeframe, if you show up, we're not going to turn you away.
Right, yeah. Volunteers are really appreciated, and actually, it's a lot of fun. Last year unfortunately, it rained all morning, but those people are so tough, they were, they hung out there, came in all dripping wet, but did their job. And it creates a really great spirit. And when people are interviewed about why they do this, it's because it feeds your heart and your mind.
It's supposed to be about 35 and party, and no rain, it's supposed to be Friday to Friday.
Awesome, glad to hear that.
It's supposed to dip down on Wednesday, 17 or 18, but it's going to go back up Thursday, and it'll be nice on Friday the 13th, so.
Good, that'll make a difference.
And I haven't gotten with John yet, but he will be able to find a couple hours.
He'll be still.
And most of you know Jim Shaw, he's here sometimes, he's here now, but he's going to help, Jim. He helps pass out the food, I'm going to help the Wednesday, I will be here at the city hall helping our clerk, Kelly Schmidt, who helps, you know, with whatever it is that she passes out, because that other Charlie had a hip replacement one day, you know, so I'm going to kind of, I'm not as big as Charlie, Terry, but I'm going to do my best to fill in part of his shoes on Wednesday. But anyway, and the gentleman that's, that moved back in the community, help me, Terry.
Billy.
Billy. Billy's going to help too in the afternoon, so.
That's awesome.
We've got some people lined up, but we sort of could use another handful.
Yeah, we do some in the stores, there's a grocery store we're always in in Durand, but we also, we have, I think, six corners covered. And I try to only do four-hour shifts for people, because I think that's a long time unless they want more. The only other thing I wanted to add is that on Saturday, the day after, we have a benefit dinner for the Long News Boys at 4:30, which is a lasagna dinner, and at 6:30 is our famous live auction. So if you want to come and have some fun, and last year the biggest battle was over two packages of Venison's jerky, and it went for $65 a package.
Same night as our Christmas tree lady on the county.
Yeah. Yeah, is there anything else? Can I help you? Anything, any questions? Okay. I'll leave these and help yourself, please.
Thank you for coming. Mark, thank you for, you helped organize this regularly in our community, I think it's a great event, and I'm glad that the city can support this effort.
Thank you. I'm going to help you with the chili cook-off, too, so.
I know. I'm excited, we get to be the taste testers. Also, we have with us tonight our county commissioner, also the representative of the city to the Sussin Board, at least one of them, the Honorable John Fong.
Thank you.
Commissioner, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, everyone. Couple quick reports, we've got a lot to do tonight. Fire ambulance board's doing pretty well. Our fires calls are about the same as they were last year, and our ambulance calls are down. You know, that is a two-edged sword, you don't make as much money, but people aren't going to the hospitals much, maybe that's not all there. We have a new ambulance coming onboard, we're having a new, we're planning a new fire truck, looks like that'll be here probably in the summer, a pump it. We're also in the process of designing a building. We have it just about down as square footage, and rooms and size and everything like that. It's kind of interesting, but we now have 15 pieces of equipment. Some is in Morris, and some in Perry, there's a couple older units outside, and we've kind of outgrown our, our facility in downtown Perry. We've had some design work done, we've put in a couple building designs, good-looking buildings, but that's about as far as we've gotten. This winter, we'll hopefully get it all tied down as to approximate cost and where it'll be. So there, but other than that, we have a pretty good full force of volunteer firefighters. I think we're down one EMT, but he's had some interviews, and I think maybe we'll pick a person up, so. So we're pretty tickled about everything that's been going on this year. On that end, then, for commissioner work, today was, I met with, again, with our chairman and of the board, and our administrator, went over the, put the finishing touches on the budget for the county for next year, 2020. It surprised me like a lot, like last year's budget, we do not expect any layoffs, that means we're going to keep road patrol. And I noticed tonight in the newspaper that part of the package that the legislature had worked with the governor on will have giving back the grants for road patrol. We have a grant for road patrol in this county, which is usually the, an extra car on in the evening, sometimes late evening, early morning, sometimes, and they travel all over the county with that grant. We also have a couple other cars on duty, sometimes one or two. So that's good news. Tough for us is, of course, legacy costs. Our normal, our normal expense for MERS retirement is about $880,000 a year, but with the legacy costs, the makeup scenario, we, we have to come up with $4.6 million this year, in which we did. So, and that's, that's, that's our big, our big, our big yellow. And we're not the only county in the state, nor are the only municipality right here in Shawassee County that's having a lot of back legacy costs they have to make up. Our present, we are, our present, this is a long time away, but we should be at 100% with our legacy costs by 2039.
If all goes right.
Yeah, if all goes right. Of course, by 2039, I'm 90, so I'm probably not going to be around. But it is quite a thing to find that money. It does impact an awful lot of our other county activities, but at the present time, all our county offices are staffed correctly, our sheriff has road patrol with 15, 14 deputies, and the one grant which makes 15. So we're functioning, but that, that money, that's a lot of money. That money is, actually, has been owed, it wasn't, it's from the 60s, the 70s, the 80s, the 90s, the 2000, 2010, well, not 2000, since about 8, it's been a lot different. We've funded everything we should have funded. Something that we're looking at too, and the money is available for us, is that the Veterans Department of our county is really kind of outgrowing where they are on the, on the third floor of the Serbeck Building, and we're looking for property to possibly build a, a new veterans office. They have approximately saved $1.2 million for that endeavor, and they've saved that over the years, and they're, and they're fund for maybe a place to build or renovate. They've not been able to find something to renovate, they looked all year, so we're looking at some property, and we're looking to build a new veterans office. So that might be interesting. We'll look at that first year, and get right into the planning, and so on and so forth. Other than that, we have a full staff, we have a new finance director, which has been excellent, she's, she's had a lot of experience in governmental auditing, which is really good for us. So it keeps everybody on, on their tiptoes, and she does, she is very precise. And Mike Haredine, who was our county administrator, been with us now, I've got to think about this, two years, almost two years, and also he's the supervisor of Middlebury Township. And he used to be the assistant prosecutor, he is an attorney, and he's a retired state police officer. So he has a lot of hats he's worn over the years. So we have a, a good contingent over there, and if you have anything, you're certainly welcome, if you have anything in the future you need, call me, I'm in the phone booth. Anybody have any questions?
Thanks for your report, John.
Yes.
Glad to have you here, anytime.
Thank you. What, you got a dinner appointment tonight, or are you going to hang out? I'm going to hang out, I'm here for tomorrow night duty, so.
Who would not want to sit and hear the report on the audit?
Yeah. I'm going to ask my wife to come, so I guess her.
That was rhetorical? All right. So let's see, we're still a little earlier, and I haven't seen our auditor come in the door, so let's move on to public comments. It is at this time during our meeting, and at the end, under any other business may come before council, that we open the floor up for members of the public to address the city council on any matter. There is a three-minute time limit on public comments, each person is entitled to three minutes in each section, should they have a lot to tell us. Would anyone from the public like to address the council about anything at this time?
Nobody else has anything.
I see a hand. Welcome in.
Following up.
Can you hear me now?
Right.
So long.
Basically, I just wanted to know if everybody received the packets of information I printed off and dropped off with sample ordinances?
I did not.
Okay, that's good to know. Did anybody else receive them?
I did mine.
I only printed off seven, because it was like 120 pages, or, I mean, it was a large amount. Did anybody else not get them?
Why, it wouldn't be.
It's the clip pack, right there.
Right there.
Right there.
All right.
Okay.
I see Ellen's got his right there.
Okay, so I'll probably be coming to every meeting just to kind of follow up on this process, because this 5G rollout is the largest health experiment without consent ever performed in public history, and it's very important that anyone in any position of leadership is informed about the risks and the hazards, and more than just the, more than just the people who made money from it saying what they want you to hear. So that's in that paperwork, did, any, basically, how can I help us create an ordinance to protect the citizens of this township, is my question.
Sure. So if you want to have conversations with council members, if council members have any questions, feel free to connect, she's come into our meetings, and so you'll have a chance to do that, ask questions and have those conversations. We don't do back and forth during public comment though, because you're on a three-minute time limit.
Right, I don't know the appropriate, I'm just trying to, I don't know anything, I just, I'm a concerned human with children that don't want them to live in a microwave or keep getting bloody noses, you know?
You're always welcome here, and.
Always.
They talk to us before and after meetings, and council members can certainly, I heard very clear invitation, you can reach out and have those conversations.
Okay, there's two sample ordinances inside that packet that other communities just across America have enacted to protect the health of their residents. It's just a sample, but, okay, so I should set up meetings with everybody individually, or in the past, when we were.
If you want to reach out, you can reach out to council members and try to set up meetings, and they can reach out to you with questions and other things like that.
Okay, we were able to come up with an ordinance and have an attorney review it to make sure that it was appropriate for the municipality, and then the council voted on it, and if it seemed positive, you know, whatever. Okay, so I would meet with people individually?
If you want to.
Absolutely.
To, okay.
I got a card with my number on it.
And we're at our three minutes now.
Okay.
But if you want to stay, we've got another three minutes for you, and or any other business, if you have somewhere you want to tell us.
No, I just want to make sure that we're on the, that everybody has accurate information to make whatever decision they would like to make.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Could I have contact info, like business letters, or, thank you, if anybody?
Information's on our website, too.
Can I have all the emails?
Okay, emailing is good?
Yes.
Do we have yours?
I will email you one though.
Go, go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment at this time? Would anyone else from the public like to address the council? Seeing no additional public comment, we'll bump back up to pre-approved reports and presentations. I see our auditor has come on in the door.
Look.
Welcome. We are ready to hear about the audit tonight. Did you bring final copies for everybody?
Nope, final copies will come after council approval.
Okay, so, does anybody need a copy of the audit tonight? Because you would have received them electronically, but I don't know if everybody's got their copy here.
I do not.
Okay. Anybody else need a copy? Everybody else is good. Chris? Yeah.
All righty, good evening. For you guys that don't know me, my name is Luke Downing, I am a senior assurance manager with Clark Schaefer Hackett. That name may sound a little not familiar to you. Previously, you were under the name of Layton Richardson, just to give you a little background. July 1st, Layton Richardson merged with another local East Lansing firm called, sorry, called Worms &amp; Comstock, to form a new office for an Ohio-based CPA firm, it's a top 50 firm in the country. So we are their first Michigan office here of Clark Schaefer Hackett, so.
We were a little unhappy about that, but they let us keep Luke, so we've been okay.
Yeah, so I, I know that previously, you guys, the previous auditor kind of went through the same thing, and it was.
Then we got all new people.
Yeah, so.
I passed it on to Clark Schaefer Hackett through Vicki Crouch, I know Vicki's going, because she's doing this to retire. I said, "If you take Luke away, the audit's in jeopardy, we may cancel him out, just let him know that."
Well, I appreciate that, but yeah, our goal is to, to have the same client service that we've had, always had before, keep the same people, maybe we may change people here and there, but I, for the foreseeable future, I'll be your, your auditor in charge of the engagement, so. As I go through this, and the reason I didn't, I don't have hard copies, is one, we haven't finalized it, and two, we are focusing on going green, so we're trying to cut that down on the amount of paper and things like that, so that's why I have everything electronically. As I go through this, I'll just kind of give a brief overview, if you guys have questions, feel free to stop me, at the end I'll ask as well, so. There's no such thing as a dumb question, a lot of these stand. A lot of these standards are not familiar to people that, you know, aren't public accountants or, or working directly in the finance. In your audit report, if you look at page one and two, that is your independent auditor's report. So, depending on the, what we call the opinion of the financial statements, this is kind of boilerplate language. The, the big thing you wanna look at is on the top of page two, it's called the opinion. In our opinion, financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities. Each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city period Michigan is of June 30th, 2019.
That's what we want.
Yes, and layman's terms, your financials represent your financial position at the end of the year, present fairly. There's no better opinion, it's called the non-modified opinion, that's, that's what you wanna see. Pages one, or three through seven are your management discussion and analysis. Just kinda gives you a brief overview of what happened throughout the year. Gives you a little detail, the numbers don't tell the whole picture. So, you wanna tell the picture of the, of the city, this gives you a little bit more detail on that. Going down to page 10, that is your statement of net position. Also referred to as a balance sheet, shows what assets you have, what liabilities you have. For instance, governmental activities, cash, 780,000. You have liabilities, you know, say accounts payable, so bills that have to be paid at your end, you had 25,000. One area you like to look at is what is your current assets versus your current liabilities. So, you have total current assets, about 1.7 million between your governmental activities and your business type. And your current liabilities are just over 400,000. So, you have plenty of current assets, so money or resources available in the next year to, to pay your liabilities in the next year. So, that is a, a very good position. The difference between your assets and your liabilities is your net position. As you guys can see, your total net position is just, just under 4 million for the total, so very good standing there. Moving on to page 12 and 13, that's your statement of activities, also referred to as the income statement. Total increase of assets is 170, just over 170,000. Page 14 is a, is a balance sheet of governmental funds, so it's kind of a subset of that first balance sheet, it just shows one area. So, your, your general fund, your major and local street funds, things like that. It doesn't include the business-type activities. Your business-type activities, also your proprietary, called your proprietary funds on page 19. That's again, it's presented on the first balance sheet, but this kinda breaks it down between the sewer fund and the water fund.
Just a note for council, cause we had talked about this earlier in the fall. If you look at page 16, under the general fund, we were talking about getting through the audit so that you would see what these general fund surplus was. This includes the 50,000 from the land sale. The net excess of revenue over expenditures for the year came in at 88,000. So, a little bit better than the numbers that, that the treasurer and I were projecting.
And that's a, what funds is that going into?
That's in the general fund, it's right here. Excess of revenue and other sources over expenditures. And that's where the 50,000 from the land sale went. So, that's the biggest piece there. We'll talk.
Alright, and then page 23 through, 23 through 44 are the notes to the financial statements. Again, the, the whole point of this audit report is to paint the picture of the city and their financials. These notes just give a little bit more detail on, on the numbers, cause numbers don't tell everything. So, if you look at, say, note five, long-term debt, that kinda breaks down when you have, when things are gonna mature, what you have to pay of that long-term debt in the next 365 days, things like that. After that, there's some disclosures related to post, post-employment benefits. Those are just kinda required disclosures based on the benefits that you guys have here in the cities. Page 46, there's a budget to actual for the general fund. This shows what you budgeted versus what you brought in, it shows the, the variance in there. And there's also the budget to actual for the local street fund and the major street fund, and things like that. Alrighty, does anyone have any questions on the financial part of the audit report? Alright, I will move on. Part of our procedures when we do an audit, we don't just look at numbers. We look at the way the city runs, how they pay their bills, how they receive money in from customers, how they make, do their payroll. And we now analyze the process and see where you might have what we call internal control weaknesses. Where if an error is made, you know, someone accidentally transposes a number or computer makes an error, things like that. Is your normal review and procedures going to catch that error? Or if someone wanted to steal money, is your normal procedure's gonna catch those things? So, we go through there, your procedures and see what, what you can improve on. And so, we give recommendations based on that. We didn't have any for the current year. There's a couple in the prior year that have been implemented, still a couple outstanding, but I know they're working on. For instance, there's cash disbursements, invoices being initial for approval by the department head, that was been, has been implemented. Payroll, timesheets being initialed with approval. So, some of the reasons these are important is, you know, if, if someone puts in, I worked 100 hours in a week, and the department head doesn't sign off on it, well, that may go through because, you know, that's, it didn't get caught. So, that is implemented, so just strengthening those, those internal controls, so. And then the report after that is just opportunity for the auditors to relay to the board anything major that we come, came across throughout the audit. There's no difficulties that we encountered. You know, everything was, was in pretty good shape. We, you know, we have adjustments, but nothing material to the financial statements. Joanne and Devon do a great job there. We, we thoroughly enjoy working with them and appreciate all they do. Cause when we come in and, and they're organized, it makes the audit go smoother. It's just, it's more enjoyable for us, you know. I can't say it's probably enjoyable for them, cause, you know, it's an audit and not on myself.
They're getting us trained. They're getting on the ball.
And, and they're getting us trained in the same way, so. But no, we do, we do thank Joanne and Devon for all their, all their work throughout the process on making it easy, so. Anyone have any questions on those? Alright. Alright, I'm, I'm always available, as Joanne knows, as Devon knows, anytime you have a question. If you guys wanna come to me directly, or, or through the mayor, or through Devon or Joanne, feel free to reach out. You know, we're not, hey, we're here during busy season and, and we're gone. We're always in the office, always available. I try to get back to, to all my emails within 24 hours. So, do you have any questions? Feel free, anytime throughout the year, not just during other time, feel free to reach out.
The auditors work for the City Council, not for me. So, if you guys have any time you ever wanna talk to him, you have the right to do that. And we'll make him available. And he's good about returning calls, so just let us know. I, I'm not gonna get between council and the auditor if you guys have any questions.
We can get your email, contact you through an email address and?
Yeah, absolutely.
Joanne, can you do that for you?
I'll send it to everybody. I'll email everybody and include that in it.
He's gonna get me a card. I mean, I don't, how often do you give off a business card? When it's not a business.
Let, let's see if I have my.
No, 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 I'll, I'll get it, I'll get it from Joanne.
I should, I should have.
He doesn't know you got.
I tried so hard to.
There you go. Well, we just moved locations, so, does anyone else want one?
No? They were in a better historic building with a huge lawn, and now they're in this strip mall-like structure. Modern, overbuilt building.
Yeah.
Practically no lawn. No, they're in East Lansing.
They're in East Lansing.
East Lansing, yep.
Yeah, baby.
Well, I appreciate.
They got bigger offices though.
Hey, they are more modern, I will say that, so. There's some, there's definitely some perks and, so.
Texas is more modern, too.
What's that?
Bet the Texans are more modern, too.
But I appreciate you guys allowing Layton to, sorry, not listening, Chris, I'm so getting used to that. Clark Schaefer Hackett to, to be your auditors, and I look forward to the coming years of it.
Thanks, Luke.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
You got done early, try Johnny G's on your way out of town, good barbecue.
I'm gonna get home, put the kids to bed.
Take some barbecue to the kids, I got a drive-through.
A free lunch.
No, I don't have none of it, but it's good food. It is not. I can recommend Johnny G's to anybody I want.
I like Johnny G's.
So, that concludes our pre-approved reports and presentations. We completed public comment, so let us move on to communications. Devon, do you have any communications for council tonight?
I'll try to be short and sweet. I wanna make sure the items I'm mentioning, actually, a couple of them just came to you tonight by hard copy. You have a correspondence from the city, you have two correspondence from the city attorney, one should be a memo, and another one should be a correspondence. You also should have received a copy of the recommendation from the planning commission regarding rezoning. And a copy of the letter to the applicant has been sent out. I wanna make sure you all received those hard copies tonight.
Cause it's on your next agenda.
I also wanted to share with you our student mayor's email. He did a very nice email, so you should have a copy of that. I'm gonna probably say this more than once, but I just don't want anybody to forget. Tuesday, December 10th, 7:00 PM, the judging of Christmas lights. And then also, there was an email. And it has pertained to our guest that spoke underneath public comment, which you should have a copy of that. That is all I have for correspondence that's come through.
Any questions for the? And we will close communications and we will move to mayor and department head reports. Kevin, since you're on the board, do you have a report for council tonight?
Just the pitches on reminder to the employee-appointed elected dinner tomorrow night. We welcome you, surely spend the time, and it looks pretty up there, and we're gonna have a lot of fun, so. Can't wait to see you all there. And then, council, you received these, but I'm gonna give them to you again with a couple of new items. The schedule has been revamped. And there's a map to show where everything's at. Schedules are gonna go to the business owners on tomorrow. They went out to the schools. Dory's, one of the things that came true is we have a Santa mailbox that is near the library in front of TDS for the children to write a letter to Santa and drop it off. So, we're real excited to have that go in out there. Lot of the same items that happened last year are happening again. If you make chili, make your chili and bring it to the chili cook-off. Chilis are to be brought in and get registered at 3:30. And the goal for that so early is that way that they can be judged and then the public, if you're willing, will be allowed to taste your chili during the event. That's all I wanted to share tonight, was we're getting all excited for next weekend.
Do they write the letter to Santa Claus at home and then there's their paper and then blow one there?
No, they, they're gonna be asked. Always done a real good in explaining that parents are letting you help with, with the addresses of their team, so to make sure that, you know, that's all clear for the correspondence, so.
Thank you.
Additional questions for the City Mayor? Hearing none, we will move on. Joanne Belting, City Treasurer, do you have a report for council tonight?
I have no, nothing to report.
Just the audit, right, that big thing that they should all read?
And they should, seriously.
Cover and cover.
No, the pages where they talk about the, what's happened during the year, the.
Management report.
Management letter is very informative. I would highly recommend, if you don't read anything else in the audit, read that page, what is it, six through 11?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Right up the front. Thank you. Any questions for the treasurer? Our DPW Superintendent, John Sauer. John, do you have a report for council tonight?
Just, uh, short. Out in Country Estates, the Sunday after, it's between Thanksgiving and Sunday, fire hydrant was run over and busted off. That's repaired and back operational, so. The lead and copper sample pool has been submitted to Eagle, or now the, the new name of DEQ. So, I thank everyone, all the residents willing to participate in this mandatory testing. November, we did a lagoon runoff, that went well. Leaf vacuuming is pretty much wrapped up for the season. I am recommending people bag stuff at this point. And we've got most everything in place for the Christmas fantasy.
Questions for our DPW Superintendent?
In Ann Arbor last week, I seen a, it was a city of Ann Arbor truck, like what we have for our DPW, dump truck with a cover on it and the, a large motor put right on the back of the truck for their leaf vacuum. Have you seen that application?
I've seen.
It was much smaller around than what, what you have. Cause I just thought, I mean, that might be an option to get a new one a lot cheaper.
What makes you think it's cheaper?
The size of ours and the maintenance.
Well, it's something that we'll have to look at in the future in our budgets. Capital expenditures and coming up with the money. Usually, John sets us on direction on that and brings us the numbers and determines what his department's most critically needs on, but certainly.
I pretty much would just wanted to know if he has ever seen one.
Yeah, that's it. Maybe this, I don't know. I was just curious if you knew something I didn't know?
Yes, I do, but we gotta wait till Santa gets here. I meant about leaf vacuum. Oh. Come on, Chris.
Any other questions for our Superintendent? Thank you, John. Chief of Police, Kyle Ox, do you have a report for council tonight?
I have a brief report. Good evening, everyone. I just wanna report that I have signed the officers up for a new online training program. And it allows for them to study certain material at their own pace. But it also includes some annual-based training that we kinda put a check in the box every year and make sure that all the employees have. And now they're gonna be able to do. and make sure that all the employees have, and now they're gonna be able to do that online. It's gonna track all of that on a regular basis and so we can pull certificates and have record of that all. So I'm looking forward to it. I've got good feedback so far. The officers are telling me that it's engaging and it's very interactive for them to be able to study it, learn it, know it and get through it. So excited about that. Got a good price on it for the introductory year that we just started. So we'll see about maintaining that for the next year. Also, due to some equipment changes in the vehicles, a lot of people typically find the police car running while the officer is on duty. If it's parked in the parking lot or here, there, or wherever, even out here at city hall. And that, a lot of that has to do with the equipment inside and trying to maintain that and keep it operational and up and going and ready for us when we need it, not booting a computer up and turning them all on and all of that stuff when we need to go out to the car. That's all great. Unfortunately, that takes gas and gas costs money. Due to some changes in battery life of some equipment and some power-saving equipment that has been installed, we're actually able to turn those off and keep them off for several hours now. And I am thrilled to report we're saving almost 50% on our gas through the fall. Checked for several months and I just got our gas bill on Monday for the previous month and it was the lowest I've ever seen it since I've been here. So excited about that and unfortunately, we're coming up to some colder months that will require the cars to stay heated and warmer, especially the windshields. But as much as we can, the guys have really stepped up and followed through with keeping the cars off as much as possible. So I was excited about that, I can foresee. Enjoy hearing that as well. And just a reminder, we've already had some snow. Keep your, keep the snow and ice removed from the sidewalks for people to walk and especially for the kids walking to school, walking home. Honestly, even after that first snow, I thought that we had really good compliance. There were very few people that we needed to speak to after that snow. And also a reminder of no parking from 3:00 to 6:00 at night. You may be ticketed and if it's necessary, you may be towed if people are found to be parked during that time. So just make sure that your vehicle is off the streets overnight from 3:00 to 6:00. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Other than items that'll come up during business, I don't have any particular new things to report on to council tonight. But do you have any questions for me? Hearing no questions, we will move to committee reports. Do council members have any committee reports for tonight?
I'll take a moment to talk about the planning commission. And we've been working through some different things lately dealing with, obviously, we've had a lot of situations with different things coming on, businesses and stuff like that that have caused some concerns. And so we're striving to find ways to improve the process that is going through for site plans and checks and balances dealing with businesses coming in and what, what concerns they may have for the community and may, trying to make sure that we can do our due diligence and have the best ability to keep any concerns from happening with the city and its residents. So we're looking forward to bringing some things before the city council and I'll post on something later on to try and shore up some of what we think are gaps in what we have in these zoning ordinances and ordinances dealing with site plans, et cetera, with the hope of improving that process.
Any questions for councilman Elliot? Any other committee reports from council members tonight? Hearing none. Catherine, did you want to talk to us about what's going on at the school?
We're mostly getting to know our new superintendent and she's getting to know us. Dr. Lori Haven is proving to be a very good superintendent and an easy person to work with. She's trying as hard as she can to get to know everybody in the district and is anxious to get to know people in the community. And she invites anybody who would like to speak to her about the school or just get to meet her, to give her office a call and she will find time to meet with you.
Wonderful. Any questions for Catherine? Thank you very much. So that will conclude our committee reports and it'll move us to presentation and approval of the bills. Council has had the opportunity to review the bills and we seek your permission to pay them.
I move that we approve the bills presented and payment be authorized.
Second.
Moved by Wood, seconded by Powell, that, give me the language, have you got it right there, Chris?
I do not. No, that's a, thank, good heat.
What are you looking for?
Just gonna get, I'm gonna, I have to repeat your motion. Okay, moved by Wood, seconded by Powell, that we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized.
Sounds pretty close.
Usually I'm paying closer attention to what you say, Terry, but I didn't do that.
This blew you off. Oh my God.
Is there any discussion on the bills? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. That will move us to old business. First item of old business is mayor's appointments. So I have a list here of the vacancies as a reminder. But I think I have filled a couple of these, so I don't think we have to do it again. But Mike Tobias is, term is up at the end of December for the library board. That's a one-year term and Mike is willing to continue to serve us on the library board. I think he's doing a good job and so I would like to reappoint Mike Tobias to the library board.
Is that what we've done?
I didn't think we had done mine.
I just want to make sure, cause we did do a lot the last year.
I think we, I think we reappointed Victor Darling and I believe we reappointed Adam. In fact, I'm sure we reappointed Adam to the Santa board. And I believe I reappointed Joanne Velting as Title VI Non-Discrimination and Limited English Proficiency Plan Coordinator.
Okay. Sorry about that, maybe I just wanted to make sure.
That's okay. I figure it's better I reappoint somebody twice than if somebody's term is available. So I'd reappoint Mike Tobias to, as the city's representative, to the community district library board for a term to expire on December 31st of 2020. And I submit that appointment to council for your advice and consent.
I move that we support the mayor's. What are you calling?
Mike Tobias?
Mike Tobias, to the library board, term ending December 31st, 2020. Second.
Moved by Wood, seconded by Elliot, to approve the mayor's reappointment of Mike Tobias to the library board for a term to expire December 31st of 2020. Is there discussion? What you got, Elliot?
We did.
We did.
It's okay, like you said, I've never heard you do it twice.
Well, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There you go. Well then, let's see, what else have we got on my list? You got your list right there, so. We are still looking for somebody to fill the fifth seat on our local officers' compensation commission. John, we got you in doing all kinds of things. You wanna have a once every two-year meeting and vote on how much these guys get paid?
Oh, thank God.
If you're interested, let me know. Point to the local officers' compensation committee.
I could really do damage to Terry, so I, you know, I. No more than.
Any other citizen in the city who's interested?
You know, if, if, if you want me to, fine. I, I won't make the remark that it has become difficult to fill boards at the county level and we're in the, part of our budget is we're gonna raise per diem's. It's become quite difficult to find people to serve on county boards.
We face that challenge here sometimes too. But any other citizen who's interested, just let me know. And that's a, that's the easiest job you can get with the city. You meet once every two years for a meeting that lasts less than an hour. All you talk about is a recommendation on what council makes, what they get paid for their job. And I found that most of the time they go in and they say, why would we pay them more? Sometimes they go in and they say, let's cut the mayor's pay. Which I'm all for, anyway.
No.
If anybody's interested, just let us know. Uh, let's see, we have a vacant seat on the building authority, which is the ones who manage this building right here. Anybody in the city of Perry who's interested in serving on that, please just reach out, let the staff know or myself know. I'll be glad to make that appointment. We are looking for someone right now to fill the term ending May of 2021. I think that's all I've got. Do you have any others? That's right, we do. I have a vacancy on the planning commission, so this as opposed, the person has to live within the city of Perry. You have to be a voter here in the city, but if there's someone out there in the community who'd like to serve on the planning commission, we have a vacant seat and I'm looking for an interested person to fill that role. Just give city hall a call and I'll be glad to have a conversation with you and fill that vacancy on upwind. So that's all I got and that will move us to the possible adoption of resolution of vacuum and chipping rules. So we've talked about this. John gave a report two meetings ago. I'm gonna open the floor up for questions, discussion and motions.
Yeah, we ain't gonna do that. Where'd he go? Where's he at?
John?
Oh, there he is. I was kidding.
Oh.
I thought I wasted my breath.
Did you have a question, Terry?
No.
What would council like to do with us?
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolutions. Whereas the Perry city council's adopted ordinance number 235, commonly known as Perry City Code, section 1080, yard waste collection. And whereas said ordinance provided that the city council shall be authorized to make rules and regulations necessary to carry out the intent of this ordinance. And therefore it is resolved that the rules and regulations be established to set by the city council and attached to these minutes and furthermore be effective January 1st, 2020.
Moved by Elliot, seconded by Gedel Mavi, that we accept and adopt the resolution as just read, adopting a policy for vacuum and chipping rules. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. That'll move us to new business. Are you ready to handle a couple of motions?
Sure.
Excellent. You don't have to sound just like, exactly like me, but if you wanted to, feel free. Our first item of new business, now this is gonna be new to council, but the clerk and I ran across this in the, in the requirements last year and it actually says that council is supposed to set their regular meeting dates not every two years when a new council comes in, but to set it every year. So we've placed this on the agenda for your consideration. We'll get you in compliance with the law. And it'd be my recommendation to council that we maintain the current meeting schedule, which has been the first and third Thursdays of each month. I'll open the floor up for questions, discussion, motions.
I thought we've been doing this every year.
No, we had been doing it every two years.
I know, we did it last year.
Right, because that was the beginning of a term. And we've always done it at the beginning of a new term. But what Devin and I found when we went and read the rules is that we're actually supposed to do it every year.
The same hours are playing.
I move that the city's council, city council meetings be set for the first and third Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM, be held at 203 West Poly Street, Perry.
All right, moved by Elliot, supported by Wood. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Outstanding. That'll move us to possible acceptance of 2018-2019 audit. Councils received their report and I'll open the floor up for questions, discussions and motions.
We accept the 2018-2019 audit as presented by Luke Downing from Clark Schaefer Hackett, CPAs and advisors.
Second.
Moved by Queen, seconded by Powell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, allow proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Outstanding. We got you all warmed up. Next month we'll have your, next meeting, we're gonna do all of them. That will move us to any other business may come before council. This is our second opportunity for members of the public to address the Perry city council on any matter. Would anyone from the public like to address the council at this time? Seeing no public comment, do members of council have any other items of business that need to come before you for your attention tonight?
I would like to present something. Coming from the planning commission, we were throwing around some thoughts dealing with some things that have recently where individuals have gone ahead and done things without having proper approval from the city. And the fact that there is nothing on record dealing with like any penalties or anything like that. The planning commission would like the council's permission to start putting together a penalty fee schedule dealing with individuals who decide that they don't need to ask the city for approval before going ahead with various things, site plans, zoning, different things like that in order to bring it back before this council for approval. I'm just kind of wanting to know what the, if the city council would like the planning commission to move forward with that.
So I've talked of this, with the city attorney regarding this process and it is his advice that the planning commission has authority to take up and make recommendations related to, anything related to the zoning ordinance, including the creation of a fee schedule. So they can do this without a formal approval from you. However, nothing forbids the council from making a motion and thereby creating a resolution asking them to do it. So you can do this if you want to and I'll let you guys talk about what you'd like to do. Craig, if you've got something specific, if you want to offer a motion, that might help.
Okay, so put forward a motion. I'd like to put forward a motion that the city council approved, the planning commission, to set up a penalty fee schedule that is commiserate with the size of business or individual who is bringing forward a situation so that if there is a violation, that the city has recourse for dealing with that said violation.
Okay, so I got a motion to approve the planning commission creating a proposed penalty.
Fee schedule.
Fee. Schedule. Fee schedule for...
Violations.
Related to obtaining proper approval of proposed projects.
Yes.
That's fair for what you're saying.
So if they go back and put it in writing under your back?
Yes, they would make a recommendation.
We didn't want to go forward with it because it's going to take some, a bit of work and research to do that. I'm willing to do that, but we didn't want to do anything if we brought it forward and everybody's like, "No way." We don't want to do that as a city council. So if you guys, what we want is just a yes, you know where we're going, and you guys agree with it, so that we can go forward with the planning commission.
What is this, is it trying not to upset you, Terry, by coming here with it?
Well, I'm understanding this. Most of our ordinances have to have a penalty fee for it in order to enforce it. So I'm trying to follow where you're going with it.
At this point in time, there aren't, as far as we can look in zoning ordinances and things like that, penalties for not complying with the different steps in our zoning and site plan reviews.
So they're saying, what if the planning commission has a site plan in front of them, and somebody starts putting in a parking lot the day before they go up before the planning commission for site plan approval? Or what's the, what's the consequence of doing that? And the consequence right now is, I can go, "Well, you were a bad boy." They'd like to have a penalty for proceeding with that. They'd like people to finish the process, other than the administration having to bring a lawsuit to stop them.
So you're going to spell out each and every infraction you can think of?
In a very general state, we'll be looking at several other communities that have these already in place and look and see like what others are doing to kind of compare, contrast us to them, and how those schedules work. For instance, so what I was trying to say before is, you treat a large business with a large issue and how they, they come forward with, if they have bring something versus, say maybe a resident doing something small to their parcel of weight, kind of idea you bear into that is one thing, yeah. But the problem is we're, well, we're starting, for whatever reason recently, we're starting to see these things pop, come up, and...
Can you give me a, for instance, that you've seen come up?
Can I, can I interject here real quick? First, actually, I let's, because we've always been a little liberal in how we do it, and I want council to be able to discuss things, but technically, he doesn't have a second for his motion yet.
I know.
You're not supposed to initiate discussion. I'm going to tell Terry he has a second.
Who? That was you.
Oh, I thought you passed that.
Well, but that was, I was reading off his motion to make sure that the clerk had it, so it would appear correctly in your minutes, and to make sure that he agreed. So is there a second for the motion?
One second.
Okay, so, motion by Elliott, seconded by Galpaby, and go ahead, Terry.
All right. Give me a, for instance, or something. I mean, to me, it sounds like you want to think of everything you want, I mean, I'm not understanding.
We're going through, we're going to go through to our, what we already have as ordinances. Right now, we have these ordinances, but there's no consequences for if anybody does not follow through them. For instance, an individual who, who needs a site plan to go forward with, so like say, building an annex onto their business, you know, and they want to put new thoroughfares and they want to add driveways and, and streetlights and all these things, things. In our, in our current zoning, we have requirements, for instance, things on how many trees need to be done, what type of trees they can put, where they can put driveways and entrances into new parking lots, things like this. Because we don't want, for instance, someone to put a park, a driveway six feet from where an intersection is, so that we have cars coming in and out that could cause serious accidents. So that's where the planning commission comes in and has the right to say, "Wait a minute, that's too close to that," or "That's not within the confines of what our zoning ordinances allow." What this will do is, we've had people who have to bring their site plan, have to get it reviewed and approved before the planning commission, and they're not doing that, and they're going ahead and doing work. And we have no recourse to say, "You just broke our ordinances for the city of Perry. You're in violation."
Other than me initiating a lawsuit to the circuit court to stop them.
Basically, we're saying that people do work without proper permits. That would be a penalty.
Yes.
If somebody built a deck on a house they own, you're going, you're going to find them.
If they don't have the pro, if, if it's in violation of something that's in the city code and they do it without that, the proper authority to do that, then yes.
Are we allowed to relearn any of, like, in two weeks when he comes with that?
I wouldn't expect it in two weeks, but when he comes back. It, it comes as a recommendation to city council.
So they don't need...
So you guys are not, you guys are not approving what they're going to come up with. You're approving them going through the process so that they can bring back this penalty schedule for you to look at, and then you can either adopt it the way they recommend it, you can modify it and adopt it as you determine it should be modified, or you can turn it down completely after they've done the work. But they're, they're looking to avoid the situation where they do all that work, and they come back and find out the city council really has no interest in this. And so they're asking for your consent with the understanding that city council will take seriously when this comes back. Not that you'll do exactly what they say, but that you'll get, you'll, you think it's important enough to give your time to, and make some determining. And when it comes back to you, you can, if you see some problems, you can ship it back to the planning commission with specific instructions on what you'd like them to look at. Consider modifying.
Basically, we desire to take very seriously what is in our current ordinances and stuff as a planning commission, and the responsibility of the planning commission to look at these and have proper approval, be able to make discussions, suggestions to people, make sure they're doing things correctly within accordance of what is already on the books. The problem with that, and most people have been okay with that, no problems whatsoever, things run smoothly, no problems, but for some reason, all of a sudden, that's not happening. And people are, are saying, are doing, instead of asking permission, they're all, they're ready to come in and go, "Oh, I'm so sorry," but they're still doing everything ahead of them.
So, so you're telling me that apply for a permit, I don't care, put a deck on.
Yeah.
And if, if they don't apply for the permit, do you want to fine them then?
But they want, if you apply for the permit, and then you start the deck while you're waiting for the planning commission, they'd like there to be a penalty for that.
Or even if you don't apply, correct?
If you don't apply, yes, or, but this was, this was caused by some recent incidences where people had a project before the planning commission, but the planning, but they began the project before the planning commission had given approval.
Otherwise, what's the point of having a planning commission? There's no point in us even meeting because there's not, what we're doing is just spinning our wheels, and people are going to go do whatever they want anyhow.
So, so if you applied to the planning commission, and then while they're considering it, you put your deck up, what happens when the planning commission says, "No, I'm sorry, you don't meet the ordinance, you can't put your deck up"? Well, he's already got his deck up.
Too late, it's there.
Or, for instance, okay, here's the example.
But it can't be too late.
Someone wants to put a deck up. Where they've decided they want to put the deck up is over their property line.
You can't do that.
But, but that's where the planning commission comes in, and we could say, "Hey, you're over the property line, you can't do those things."
It's not your job to tell them they're over the line. It's a building inspector, it's, it's, I've already been through this. You have to apply for permits, you have to apply for zoning, you have, they check whether it's on your permit, on your property, whether you're far enough from the road. It's already there. You're looking for a fine if they don't apply, or they go ahead with it before they get approval.
Because the arch ordinance, the state, there is a process that has to be followed. And what's the point in having the process on the record at all if we're not going to have any consequences if someone chooses not to do this?
So what you're saying is, there's no fine for somebody that, I'm trying to think...
We're not going out policing things, we're not going out and approving or disapproving things. What the planning commission does is, we just make sure that whatever the person wants to do follows through with the ordinances, that they have gone to the zoning commissioner and made sure that he's approved what they're doing, that they've gone through each process of where they're supposed to go and verified and have that approved. If, well, here's another example. Say someone wants, a company wants to do something that is going to cause severe congestion on M-52, okay? Or, or say, heavy trucks are going to pass across M-52 all the time, right across the street from the elementary school, hypothetically, okay? They have to go through and, and go through these county commissioners and all these different things to make sure that they have the proper approvals for that ability. The zoning, or the planning commission makes sure that they have all that in order before they are allowed to go forward with what they're doing.
So you want to police it?
That's what our job is, that's what the planning commission's responsibility is to do. If, and if we...
I ain't going to agree to that.
Okay.
You're just laying down the rule, if you do this, this is what it's going to cost you, and we'll put it on your taxes if you don't want to pay it.
If, if a guy, what guy, see, I think I follow you, but you're going beyond what I think you should do. Say, a guy gets a permit or whatever, I don't care for whatever.
But let's take a real example, Terry, I've got a real example for you.
I thought I had the floor.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. You do that a lot to me. Say a guy gets a permit, okay? And if he don't follow that permit by the rules, you're saying there's no penalty for him.
No, that's not what we're saying. We're saying that if they have not even gotten approval, that they're supposed to do the truth.
You're saying if they start something without approval.
Correct. That's where the, what we're asking for is penalties for that, because they aren't willing to wait or do the right procedures according to what our city ordinances say to do.
So let me give you a real example.
We're not here to police or to say that we have better knowledge than the people who have authority that have the responsibility to do that. We're not taking those people's things. We're just simply stating that if someone does not come, like, with their site plan to the planning commission, "Here's your site plan, this is what we want to do, oh, by the way, we already started work on it."
So the real example is, up at, up at the Johnny V's Restaurant, they were going through a site plan approval before the planning commission. But approximately a day before they came to the hearing for the planning commission to get the site plan approved, the company doing the asphalting for the new parking lot started putting it in without the approval. And the planning commission was frustrated by the fact that there was no penalty, that they began putting in the asphalt before they had the required approval from the planning commission. And this is their effort to create a penalty for jumping ahead in the process like that.
I can agree with that. I have no problem with that. But I think, eh, what bothers me is I think it can turn into a little bit of nightmare on some fringe. I really would like to think on this. I would like to work, do some problems here, because I'm, I think...
Well, how about if we let the planning commission work on it, and then you'll have a chance to look at what they're proposing and see if it presents the problems you're concerned about.
It's putting out forward a bunch of hypotheticals without the zoning stuff in, in front of us and the, and the responsibilities we're supposed to do and having real-life cases involved, it's difficult. We're, we may not be saying the correct wording, you know? I thought, I don't think, what I'm saying is not what you're thinking. I can tell you that right now, that you're thinking way beyond what we're planning on doing.
And I think, Craig, if, I'm hearing them go more at a level that's at the zoning administrator level, and I hear you talking about the planning commission level. But I think what you said was, yes, we would be addressing like that, which is more at a zoning administrator level. So I think that's where the confusion is, because you're really, your subject goes back to your planning commission level of, you know, you're in the process and you jumped the gun.
See, the planning commission, in my opinion, should be prior to, not after the fact. You follow that? Planning commission should be, agree, you know it. Planning commission should be given approval to things in the, in the advance.
Yes.
But after the fact, our ordinances should kick in and trigger that. We, we specifically, on a lot of ordinances, now, I mean, we didn't do, but I thought we put fines, because if a guy don't follow the rules, there's got to be a penalty, there's got to be teeth in it.
I agree.
We've argued that in here. We've put teeth in a lot of them.
No.
There is none.
We, we offered the opportunity to put those, that teeth in. So it, it says you may do this, and you may do that, because when the ordinance was being worked on and put together, there was hesitant of actually creating it at the time. So what they did is, the wording was put in so that, like, what they're talking about, doing a recommendation, that you could move forward with it, to not have to change your ordinance, and allowed it to do it as more like on a policy or a fee schedule of what they're saying.
So they want to do the next step of creating that set of penalties.
I remember sitting right in this chair when we debated that on ordinances, because they're no good if you can't enforce them, and without a penalty to follow, then they're no good.
But the ordinance didn't create the penalty. It only created the opportunity to create the penalty.
The penalty is after the fact. If they don't follow the ordinance, then it was, and we said you got to have teeth in it, because it's no good otherwise.
We all agree with you on that, Terry, but, but there are no penalties. The penalties were never created. We created an ordinance that allows the city council to create these penalties, but nobody ever created the penalties yet. And so they want to create the schedule of the penalties, so that you can look at that and city council can put that schedule in place, if you approve of what they put together.
I remember talking with that guy who come in and rewrote all them stupid things, and we talked about this.
And you got the part...
Putting teeth in it. Nobody put teeth in it?
Well, step two hasn't been done. Step one was done to make it so you could without modifying the ordinance every time, but step two hasn't been done yet. No one has sat down and worked out the penalty schedule. And the planning commission wants to do that hard now.
We're willing to take that step and move forward with that and do the work, the legwork and research for the city council, but we don't want to do that if the city council is just going to say no in the long run anyhow.
It's a dilemma, isn't it?
They're not interested in having them.
Yeah, we don't want to go ahead and spend the effort on that.
I am, but I want...
But it has to come for a rule for the city council, and nothing can be done before the city council approval of it. We can't put anything in place without city council approval, but we just want the willingness to look at it if we put the time in to do that.
I'm going to give you my go on this, but I'm going to want to look at that pretty good, so don't bring it to me and expect me next week to...
This isn't something that's going to happen in two weeks. This is going to be a couple of months, probably.
I really want to look at that, because I'm just not comfortable.
Yeah, and in the past, the...
You follow what I'm saying?
The penalty, if somebody builds a deck on the wrong side of property, rip it off and have to move it, that's a pretty big penalty, and that's more stiffer than any final ruling.
I've never seen them do that, okay?
And that was a very hypothetical situation, it wasn't a real situation, okay? So I'm just trying to find hypotheticals for you off the top of my head, that's all.
Well, that's where I have a question, too, because if we can't find real-life things and we're having pretty hypothetical discuss about it, isn't a real issue?
I didn't realize that.
You're going to spell that out pretty clear.
I put up a fence without knowing that I needed one, and it was made aware to me seven, eight months later, I think it might have been, and by Lila, and gave it and paid it. You know, but if, if I didn't...
That's not what we're talking, necessarily talking about here. We're talking about people who are willingly know the process and the procedures they're supposed to go through, have set up the, the things to do it, and choose to ignore those anyhow and continue on, and it's basically thumbing the nose up to the city as well. That's what we're talking about.
I think he's talking more at commercial level.
Yeah.
So if, if we, if we want to send this to the planning commission, they'll come back with a report, and you'll have to have time to review the report, consider it, ask questions, and the city council will get the final word on whether or not that recommendation goes in place. So, other questions, other discussion items? Are you all set, Terry? Do you have what you need?
Yeah, I told you, I'm going to give you my blessing on this one, but I'm going to want to read that pretty close.
Okay, so, all in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion, Terry. Any other items of business that council has tonight that needs to come before you for your attention? Chris?
Yes. On Tuesday night, 7:00 PM, we're leaving city hall and we're going to convoy around the city and look at all the Christmas lights. And we're going to come back here afterwards and we're going to judge them. Anybody that wants to come, be here at 7:00, bring your kids, bring a friend, dress appropriately, take your pictures. I mean, and it's a lot of fun. And so, um, 7:00 o'clock, we're leaving and that's it.
Thank you, Chris. Any other items from council members on items of business that need to come before you for tonight? I have one thing to bring to your attention, this will show up on your next agenda. The planning commission has done their process regarding a, a request for rezoning of a parcel of property. And that comes before city council at your next meeting on the 19th. Planning commission has recommended against the rezoning and we're going to be providing you information related to the rezoning request, advice from the city attorney, laying out what your options are as a city council, what you do with this once it lands on your desk. We are also, as required by state law, submitting a letter to the applicant advising the applicant that their rezoning request has been denied. That the matter will come before the Perry city council, who will make the final decision on December 19th. And that if the applicant wishes to address you while you consider the application, that he has to submit a formal request. So we're going to give him the opportunity to do that. He may be here and different from what our usual business practice is. If he requests a hearing, then he will be entitled to come up to the podium and talk to us during your deliberations regarding his request. We can get into more details once it's in front of you, once you have a chance to review the advice from the city attorney and all the information. And city council will have authority to do any number of things related with this. You could say, forget it, what the planning commission said, we approve it. You could say, we need more information, we're sending it back to the planning commission. You could affirm what the compe, the planning commission said. So we get all that information to you. Please make sure that you read your packets in advance of the next meeting so that you'll have all that information. And if these folks come for a hearing, you'll have the background so you'll be able to talk with them and decide what you want to do.
I assume we'll have that information?
We're working on it right now. Some of it we have already tonight and Gavin will be getting the rest to you. This is part of it, this is the recommendation from the planning commission.
Can I ask you, is, is this correct, it's right across from the elementary?
It is not across from the elementary.
No, they're not the elementary, middle school.
The middle school.
Middle school, middle school.
Yeah.
Across Britton Road from the, the middle school.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
You know what's going on next between Taco Bell and, and Hebsen?
We can talk about that after the meeting.
Okay, I just thought that would be, I'll move it in.
Okay, that's it, unless council has any other items of business? Then we'll move to council discussion and observations. Catherine, anything you'd like to add?
Uh, yes, one thing that I didn't mention when I gave my report was that the school district has had incidents lately where we've had to make peace with the Perry police department. And Dr. Hayden has been very grateful for their help and had many kind things to say about our police department.
Thank you. Councilman Galpoby? Uh, councilman Greggs? Councilman Elliot? Councilman Powell?
Hell, no, thank you, I got it.
Councilman Quinn?
I just remind everybody the importance of, you know, when the police have someone pulled over, stopped or there's, you know, road commission or, or EPW are doing work to veer off, pull over, right? Especially in the winter times, getting slippery and cold and just takes a little slip of the wheel to end somebody's life and destroy their family, so just please make sure you take caution.
Councilman Wood?
Yes. The superintendent's a little disappointed in our council. I'm disappointed in it. We started a program a couple of years ago where we would go to one of their meetings. Different one every time. We haven't had nobody there since Greg. And she's a little disappointed. I kind of like, see, you know.
I went to the last one.
Oh, I bet, you're part, you're right, you're the first one since Greg. Let me rephrase that, Mindy was the first one since Greg. You know, we started this for a reason. The, the school's very important to the city, the, this council's very important to the city, but we don't even know each other. We have no idea if we have to go talk to them, negotiate with them, and it's very difficult when you don't know nobody. Two different entities like this should at least be familiar with each other and say, know who they are. And I just would, you know, I, I say, yeah, I know, we've talked about it, they'll be here next week. Yeah, I know about it, I've talked to them, they'll be here next month. Yeah, I've talked to them, they'll be here two months from now. I, I just thought it would be nice if we could do it. They come here, they've been really good at it.
Catherine's been a great one at it.
She's been fantastic.
She's been better than anybody else on any other board, this one, one of them.
I'm disappointed in them too. That's all.
But she's been consistent for us.
We do have a schedule.
Pardon?
We did set a schedule.
I know we did.
Could you get a copy of the schedule to the council again to remind everybody where is their training?
I've watched this one.
Outstanding. Don't even know when to be there.
On the 16th, 7:00 AM, I'm assuming? Have on my calendar.
Good.
I'm assuming it's in the school district offices.
Right in the superintendent's area, right there in the school board room.
Sounds good.
You'll sit next to me.
All right.
Oh, I didn't do that, I just sat in the audience.
You what?
I just sat in the audience.
You sit right up at the, just like this.
We, we set the program up to make it as open as possible. So when a school board member comes, they sit at the table with us and they have privileges to speak. Instead of being part of the public and limited to a three minute time comment, they're here as an elected official to build a relationship and so again, the same privileges as council members. And you get the same privileges there. Still glad you're there though. Anything else, Terry?
No, I have to.
All right, I've said enough for tonight. So we'll move to agenda items for the next meeting. We'll have consideration regarding the zoning recommendation from the planning commission. Mayor's appointments in the hopes that we have somebody for the planning commission. That's all I have. Does anybody have any other items for the next agenda? If anything comes to your attention between now and the next meeting, please bring it to the attention of the clerk. We will endeavor to have all items of business that need to come before you for your consideration on the agenda. Would you like to announce the time and gamble us first?
Sure, uh, so the time is 8:34. Do we have to have a motion to adjourn?
Nope, we're at the end of the agenda.
All right, meeting adjourned.